Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the April 5th, 2022 Planning Commission meeting. Would everybody please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Mr. Tuckfield, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Spatafora. Here. Mr. Meyerly. Mr. Tuckfield is here. Mr. Hardy.
Here.
Mr. Bentley. Ms. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Oliver. Mr. Chairman, I think that's four members.
That's four members. And Mr. Bentley, Mr. Oliver, and Mr. Meyerly all have excused absences.
And Mr. Chair, I will move to exclude Member Oliver, Secretary Bentley, and Member Meyerly from all roll call votes this evening.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Spatafora.
Support.
Seconded by Mrs. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion passes. All right, approval of previous meeting minutes. Is there any discussion?
If there's none, Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the previous meeting minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to double check. I think Mr. Bentley might have had a comment, and I did not thought to check for this, but I just want to make sure we don't. Nope, none of his comments were for the minutes. My apologies.
So, motion by Mrs. Spatafora, seconded by myself. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, motion passes. Approval of tonight's agenda. Is there any discussion, additions, deletions, anything you all would like to add?
Mr. Chair, if there's nothing, we're going to add the agenda. I'll make the motion to approve it.
Okay, motion by Mrs. Smith to approve.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Spatafora. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. All right, on to old business. Conditional rezoning request. Residential multifamily, low density, R2L to general commercial C2. Permitted parcels 0817426003 and 0817402005, located on the east side of Romeo Plank, quarter mile north of 23 Mile Road. Chester Bucinski, petitioner. Mr. Box.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commission. This is an item that's been on your agenda for a few meetings now. We're finally ready to move forward. I think we spent dozens and dozens of hours making sure this was exactly the way we wanted. That was a reason for the delay, I think, between myself and Mr. Aloya's staff, and Mr. Van Tiflin and Chester here. We went through it several times with a fine-tooth comb, and I think we're finally at a spot where we're ready to move forward. So, that being said, this is a conditional rezoning request. They are seeking to rezone the parcels conditionally from R2L to C2 with the hopes of developing a commercial landscape business. I do want to note that the parcel numbers that you read out, as of now, those parcels stretch all the way on the opposite side of the river. In the future, those will be split off. The legal descriptions in the packet identify where those would be split. I think that's where Mr. Bentley had a comment on one of those, and we will adjust that accordingly. So, the property is, as you see on the screen behind you, I think most people in this area would refer to that or know that as the Wade Nursery property that the township is now in possession of. So, that being said, the conditional rezoning, the agreement that was reached between the applicant and the township and our staff had a number of criteria listed. Those are the items listed on the screen. They're all in your packet as well. But they include essentially things of such nature of how it would be landscaped, the installation of the sidewalk, the dedication of the right-of-way, although much of that will actually take place during the sale process. Installation of the driveway approach from Romeo Plank Road, as well as a parking space and a concrete pad to the future office that's on the facility. And they will still submit a site plan, an engineering plan, for final approval. So, you would see that before you at that time. At this point, they, again, the township and the applicant, I think, were all comfortable and happy with the end result of where we got with this conditional rezoning and the restrictions that they offered to get to that. There is a concept plan that's in the packet that also has some additional detail about what to expect there. This is essentially a business that will operate very similar to what was there previously with Wade Nursery. However, it will have additional landscaping along Romeo Plank, so the aesthetics would be increased, landscaping along really all of the buffers, a paved driveway. They're going to be doing some rehab to what was once a house on the property and turn that into some office area, as well as use the existing structures on the property. Old Town Hall, as many of you know, is on that property. Part of the agreement is that they will give the township six months to remove that from the property. The township will retain possession of that. So, should this move forward and the sale take place, the township would then have six months to relocate that.
Okay. Petitioner, would you like to come up? Do you have anything you'd like to share? Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Chester Bucinski.
Just have a seat, sir. Relax. Okay. Name and address for me, please.
Address is 702 Avenue, Royal Oak, Michigan, 48073.
Okay. Is there anything you'd like to add?
I think Josh covered most of the high points. We've been working on this since December when we won the bid. And I think we have a phenomenal plan for the property. It's going to be beautiful, and we're going to rehab it up and get it looking great.
Okay. Commissioners, comments, questions?
I have one question for Josh. Do we know what we're going to do with the old town hall?
I think there's some possibility of relocating it to current town hall area. But I don't think there's anything 100% definite at this point.
I was just curious. Thank you.
Is anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, if I could.
Yes, Mr. Tuckfield.
Josh, I may not have understood this when reading it the first time through, and this might need to go to legal counsel. There's some distinction between permitted use and normal use with a C2 zoning. Permanent use based on the attached plan we have? What is defining the permitted use? Maybe it's in the agreement, and I skimmed past it because you... Can you help clarify the difference there?
I guess I'm not understanding the question.
So, in the first slide, you seem to distinguish between the permitted use and other uses in C2.
Oh.
Are all uses in C2 being allowed, only specific uses?
Only this specific use. Were this business to, you know, open up and operate as intended, and then someday happen to go away? It would essentially revert back to the R2L.
Okay, and then...
Or someone could come back in with a similar business and maintain the C2 for a landscape-type business.
And I might be reading over it. We're trying to read it up here. This does happen to me on occasion. I'll look for something and then realize later I'm reading right past it. But the permitted use that he's doing, is that defined by the concept plan? Did I miss that specifically in the rezoning document?
Yeah, I think it's both in the conditional rezoning agreement and the concept plan, both. And it will be guided by the concept plan and the conditional rezoning agreement as they move forward with the site plan.
Okay. So, if he wanted to use the property, I'm rehashing this, just making sure, for something that's substantially different than what his plan is, it would revert, or he'd have to do another request for conditional rezoning?
Correct.
Or standard zoning, I suppose, if he wanted to. Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else?
Yeah, just one follow-up question. I guess to Aaron, did you mean, you said permanent, did you mean permitted?
I did. Permitted, not permanent.
Okay, that's what I thought you meant, but it sounded like permanent.
I did not mean it to sound that way. My apologies.
No problem. I guess to Josh and maybe to Mr. Bucinski, good evening. The perimeter, which would include all along the east side of Romeo Plank, you are proposing a natural buffer of spruce trees? And is that to be like a solid screening type of buffer of trees where, you know, site is limited? Or will they, is it your intent to kind of space them out pursuant to the, I guess, the, you know, the landscaping in the area?
Yeah, it'll certainly match the landscaping in the area. We're intending to use picea, like you said, spruce trees. We need to space them adequately so that they will grow over time and fill in. But it's going to be quite thorough, especially on the northern border, because that's the border that, you know, touches next to a residential property. So, we're going to probably space them more narrowly on that area to begin with. We haven't ironed out specific plans for the landscape, but we've talked about also doing a berm and just berming the area to get some more elevation right from the beginning.
Okay, would that berm be all around the periphery or just in certain segments of the property?
Potentially the entire periphery. The southern border already has a masonry wall and some very mature picea that belong to the southern neighbor. So, a berm there may not be necessary, but certainly the eastern and northern sides.
And you plan on retaining that wall on the southern boundary?
We do. It's in great shape.
Now, across the boundary along Romeo Plank, I think we have a condominium development that's across the street. So, are these spruce trees designed to hide or screen, you know, the bulk of your inventory and product that would be behind it? Or will there be openings where, you know, traffic and residents would be able to notice it?
Our intention is to screen it pretty significantly.
Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Good. Okay. Anyone else? All right, at this time, I'd like to open it to the public with a motion. Anyone like to make the motion at 6:42?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, motion made by Mrs. Smith.
Support.
Support by Mr. Tuckfield. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. If there's somebody in the audience, and there's just the four of you, but if there's somebody in the audience that would like to speak, now's the time. And any person wishing to speak will be recognized and will be asked to give their name and address before speaking. We ask that all speakers limit their comments to four minutes. Once the public portion is closed, we will not recognize any further discussion or comments from the community. Is there anyone that would like to speak? Anyone? Are you sure?
I'm on this issue.
Okay. Guys, anything over there? You're good? Okay. All right, well, then, I need a motion to close the public hearing at 6:42.
I'll make that motion to close.
Motion by Mrs. Smith.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Spatafora. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, motion passes. All right, back to the item. Is there anyone that would like to make a motion?
I do just have one quick comment before we get to motions or questions, if I could. To legal counsel, again, I'm reading something here on the fly, which is not the best way to be complete. But there is reference to permitted uses in IA. Applicant shall only use the property for the permitted uses. And I don't see the corresponding definition to that. I may be missing it. Maybe it's just the site plan. And I don't have a problem with this plan in general. I just, hopefully, you can bring that back as comments to Mr. Aloya that it seems we should make sure that if we're referring to the permitted uses, we should be spelling out what the permitted uses are. My opinion is that the drawing may not be clear enough.
Which, pardon me, which document do you have, Mr. Tuckfield?
I'm looking at a conditional rezoning agreement.
Okay. I believe the permitted uses are in Section B.
In Section B.
He might be, excuse, Mr. Chair, Mr. Tuckfield. Excuse me, I just wanted to maybe further amplify what Mr. Tuckfield was saying. It's on the agreement that we have, page two, paragraph 1A. It says applicant shall only use the property for the permitted uses. And I don't know, maybe a clarification, use being what you described it looked like in paragraph, sub-paragraphs B through I, throughout the rest of that on pages two and three.
I do think B in the recitals is closer to what I was saying, which is obviously right at the front. It is closer, but if we can make sure it's clear that it's permitted uses or at least consider it, just a comment. I have no issue with the concept. I'd just be concerned with that.
Yeah, I mean, my understanding is that the permitted uses are defined in recital B.
Office use, landscape business vehicle, equipment and inventory storage, plant nursery operations, bulk material storage, and direct sales on-site and potential future on-site direct sale of plant materials. Potential installation of security gate and related improvements would be the, I suppose, permitted uses. It's not necessarily laid out in the way we would have uses elsewhere in the ordinance, but yes. A comment, I wouldn't stop the voting. Just something I want to make sure I mentioned.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, you're welcome, Mr. Tuckfield. Anyone else? All right, do we have a motion? Anyone like to make that motion?
Mr. Chairman, if there's no further discussion, actually, I should verify. Am I calling out both parcel IDs here?
Yes.
Okay, as they're stated on our agenda.
Correct.
I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval of the conditional rezoning request for permanent parcels 0817426003, 0817402005, from residential multiple family low density R2L to general commercial C2, based on the recommendations from the appropriate departments and matching up with the plan for the area.
Okay, I'll second that. And Mr. Tuckfield, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Tuckfield votes yes. Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Spatafora?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes unanimously.
Wonderful.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I appreciate you.
Good luck.
All right. New business, public hearing, preliminary plan, Willowood Commons Number One. Permitted parcel 0820426027, located on the west side of Romeo Plank, north of 22 Mile Road, Section 20. Steve Rizzo, petitioner. Mr. Box.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commission. So, as you see, 7A and 7B are somewhat related, but we'll go through them one by one. 7A being Willowood Commons Number One. This is a portion of the property that will contain the future Pittford Park. It is on the south side of the drain that runs through that property. And the applicant is requesting a preliminary site plan approval for this. It is a four-unit, single-family residential development. They have, as you see here, the layout, they have received a variance from the ZBA noting that some of the lots are smaller than the required 8,400 square foot dimension. All other dimensional requirements are met. They are also in Willowood Commons Number One, as you see on the very north side of the cul-de-sac, providing a 10-foot-wide landscape easement that will potentially allow access to Pittford Park in the future with possibly a pedestrian drain crossing of some sort. It is a pretty small development, accessed only by Zoe Drive. That being said, all of the staff is recommending approval as there are no outstanding items at this time.
Okay. Mr. Petitioner, come on up, you guys. Please state your names and your address for us, for the record, please.
Steve Rizzo. 61532 Huntington Circle, Washington Township.
Okay, and sir?
Joel Badway with Community Engineering, 580524 Mile, Shelby Township.
Okay. Do you have anything you'd like to add, Mr. Rizzo?
I know, we're looking, it's a great project. I'm a small residential builder, so this size project. We, back in the day, I built a lot of houses when I was working with my father in Willowood. We want to bring the same product and build some nice house. They had the community over there. Like I said, I do three, four houses a year. So, it would just be me in there and bored doing my first development.
Okay. Petitioners, do we have comments or questions?
Yes. Were the previous developments, Willowood Numbers 1, 2, and 3, related to this proposed site condominium development?
Not through me, no.
Okay. Because I only ask because in the development map, those were listed as residential subdivisions. They look like, through Zoe Drive, they connect to this, which would be a site condominium development. So, I take it, then, you have the requirements of a master deed, maintenance, and things like that to fulfill?
Yeah, that's the next step in the process is preparing that master deed.
Okay. And with the circumference of the cul-de-sac turnaround, there is wide enough for public safety vehicles to maneuver in and maneuver out if necessary?
Yeah, that's, it takes up quite a bit of that portion of the property, you can see. But it's a terminus. It's more of a, you know, for emergency vehicle turnaround. And all of the dimensions that we have meet Macomb County Road Commission standards.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
I just had a question for Mr. Box. We've got two items on here, and you might have mentioned this. I've been juggling back and forth, so my apologies if I cross over something. But Melissa had two outstanding items. She wanted any motions conditioned on. Are those still outstanding? Have they been taken care of? It looks like a master deed copy conditioned on the purchase.
The master deed would come at the next step, so yes, that...
Yes, that's still, very good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome, Mr. Tuckfield. Anyone else? Okay. At this time, at 6:51, I would like to open it to the public. And you?
The big public.
And I need a motion to do that.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mrs. Smith.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Spatafora. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion passes. Again, you heard me read my little spiel, so are you good with that?
I'm good to talk.
Okay. So, if you'd like to come up, come on up, absolutely.
We're such a small group. Hi, my name's Kathy Galaska, 49348 Zoe Drive. I'm right next to where he's going to be building. I have a couple of questions. I know he met with my husband at the last meeting, and he had brought up where the trucks were going to come in. He's homesick, so he wanted me to ask if you guys have come up with any plan other than coming through our streets that are already so torn up? Or are you going to rip them up some more?
Well, as of right now, the only entrance for us is through that subdivision, unfortunately.
Okay.
You know, unless we are granted another construction site off of Romeo Plank through the township's property, which I don't know if they would allow that, so.
Okay. And I have another question that maybe is something I'm confused on. Are these condos? Or are they single-family homes like I live in?
They're single-family homes.
Okay, because I just keep hearing them ref...
Which, I guess, the definition is there's some processes different.
Yeah, it's like, you know, they used to do flats, you know, subdivision flats for big neighborhoods.
Okay.
Now, this is like the new way of doing those flats, like condominium.
Okay.
If we could get all of your questions at once, then we'll answer them in kind of a bulk kind of thing.
And my last question is, what is your timeline for starting this? Because, you know, you're coming to next door to me, so I need to prepare. It's been 25 years since I've had anybody next door to me, so... Not to mention, I have a really nice basketball net at the end of the street. We got to get out.
All right. And is that it?
I, you know, let me double check.
Okay.
He gave me a list. Yep, that's it.
All right. Mr. Box, did you want to comment on any of those questions?
Yeah, I guess I'll tackle her concern over the term condominium. So, yes, I think a lot of people think of, when they hear the word condominium, think of, you know, larger buildings, multi-story with individual, almost like an apartment, but privately owned instead of renting. That is not what this is. These are single-family homes through the site condominium process. The vast majority of Macomb Township is a site condo. So, what you see as single-family home, that's what this is going to be. It's a different term of condo that you're thinking of.
Okay. So, would it be like a detached condo then, or it's...
Hold on, you're off mic. If you want to come back up, since you're the only two here, you can do that.
It's a site condominium. I don't know for sure the surrounding neighborhood. That's probably, that's a little older. I assume it's platted. But, you know, if you drive down 25 Mile on your way out of here, most of the houses you see on either side, those are site condos. They're houses. They're single-family homes.
Okay.
All right. Petitioner, did you have anything to share, Mr. Rizzo?
It's my intent to build houses similar or actually, you know, maybe with three-car garage even for the houses that are in Willowood right now. They're going to be in the 400,000-plus range, which is similar to what's in there now. So, we're going to keep it the same as what's in there, you know. By no means, I don't, the site condos, these are houses, you know. They're going to be houses that will fit well with the neighborhood. And our plan is to, once we get rolling, we're going to be part of the HOA of Willowood as well. We just, we're working on that right now. So, that is what we're doing.
Okay. Mr. Spatafora, you had a...
Yes, I just wanted to further add, from a historical perspective, and you want to go back 20, 25 years or so ago, a lot of developers came in with subdivision flats pursuant to the Michigan Subdivision Control Act. But the steps for developers to get it through, to get it approved, were like six, seven steps. And then, when the laws in Michigan changed in many communities, not only in Macomb Township, you've seen over the last 20, 25 years, developments that come in that would look just like traditional, single-family subdivisions were being pursued by developers through the condominium laws in Michigan, which they call a site or, in many cases, you know, yeah, a site development, which is vast majority would be a detached, single-family home that looks, and it's just like the flavor of a regular subdivision, you would never know really the difference. They do have further requirements, and that's why I asked a question about a master deed. But Mr. Rizzo had explained, it looks like they're going to be a part of the association of homeowners with the existing developments. So, that is what you see, and that's why the developers in the last 25 or so years predominantly do what they do like that, because it's just easier and quicker. As time is money for, you know, business people like that to get it through.
Okay.
All right. You know what? Did we ever close the public portion?
No.
Yeah, I don't think I did. Okay.
I'll make that motion.
All right, at 6:58, we're closing the public portion.
Second.
You didn't answer my last question.
What's that?
You didn't answer my last question.
Well, but you were already done, though.
No.
All right, go ahead. Go ahead. We'll make it 6:59. What's that? Oh, timeframe.
Mr. Chairman, we have it, and we can have them, obviously. Handle whatever...
Yeah. When do you start?
Get our full approval and stuff, and we move forward. It may be next year.
Okay.
He can't, they can't hear in the...
Yeah.
They couldn't pick up on that back there.
Yeah, it may be next year, once we get our full approval, if everything moves forward, you know.
Okay. Lot of hoops to go through to get this done.
Yeah.
I got you. Okay. Are we good? Okay, you're welcome. All right, now, 6:59, we're going to close. Motion by Mrs. Smith, seconded by Mr. Spatafora. All in favor?
It's Mr. Tuckfield, but that's...
Mr. Tuckfield, then, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, motion passes. All right, do we have a motion on this item?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, if there's no further discussion,
Yes, Mr. Chairman, if there's no further discussion, I will make a motion to recommend preliminary plan approval for Wildwood Commons number one. That's permanent parcel zero eight two zero four two six zero two seven, and pursuant to the reviews from our departments and comments set forth.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Spatafora.
Support.
Seconded by Mrs. Smith. Mr. Tuckfield, please call the roll.
Chairman, Mr. Spatafora?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Tuckfield votes yes.
Okay, on to the next item. Preliminary plan, Willowood Commons number two, permanent parcel zero eight two zero four two six zero two seven, located on the west side of twenty, west side of Romeo Plank, north of Twenty-Two Mile Road, section twenty, Steve Rizzo, petitioner. Mr. Box?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commission. So this, as I mentioned before, is related to the other one. Again, it's the southern portion of Pitchford Park, south of the drain, but this, this piece is connected to Carl's, I believe it's Carl's Road or Carl's Street. And it is essentially a mirror image of the previous item. It is a four-unit, single-family site condominium development. They did, again, get some, get a variance from the ZBA in January for some lots that are smaller than the required eighty-four hundred square feet. All of their other dimensions are met, and sidewalks are provided as required. And I'll note, this one does not have the ten-foot easement at the north end across the drain. So if there is going to be a pedestrian crossing into Pitchford Park in the future, it would come from Zoe Drive, not from this drive, this Carl's Drive. That being said, we are recommending approval at this time.
Okay. Anything, Mr. Rizzo, you'd like to share?
Same thing as prior.
Okay. Petitioners, questions? No one? Okay, open it to the public at seven oh one with a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Mr. Tuckfield, seconded by me. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay. Anybody would like to come up and speak? Nobody? Are you sure? Positive? Okay, then we close the public portion at seven oh two with a motion. I'll make that motion. And seconded by Mr. Tuckfield, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, anybody opposed? Motion passes. All right, do we have a motion on this item?
Before a motion, a quick question I just thought of. Do the deed restrictions, if you know, in Willowood, do they permit boundary fencing? Or is it open? Which by, I guess, extension would go to these two twin developments.
I don't know that.
Yeah. I was thinking of the backyards of units one and two here with units three and four with the previous phase that we approved, or recommending approval. Okay, it's just something that I guess to think about. I don't know if... But it'll be reviewed by the departments when you submit your condominium documents. And if there's no further discussion, Mr. Chair, I make a motion again to recommend approval of the preliminary plan for Wildwood Commons number two, permanent parcel number zero eight two zero four two six zero two seven pursuant to the department reviews and comments.
Okay, I'll second that. And Mr. Tuckfield, please call the roll.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Spatafora?
Yes.
Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Tuckfield votes yes. Ms. Smith?